Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
And welcome to the June 13th, 2023, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, I would now like to begin the meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. McLaughlin, would you lead us in that, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So we have, as usual, a full agenda this evening. I am glad to welcome everyone who chooses to attend and would like to speak this evening. But I do ask so that we can try to keep to our agenda time that you keep your comments brief and on topic to the extent possible. If you are up here for your own public hearing, you will be allowed to chance to speak. When the hearing closes, the board will take its matters under discussion for debate at that point in time. You are not welcome to add further comment unless asked by the board. We are going to start this evening with ZBA 2022-01. This is 47 School Street, and this is the review of a special permit under Section 181.335 to convert a large single-family into a two-family dwelling in the residential B District. Sir, if you are here for this hearing, if you would approach and sit at the table and give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Danny Tran. I'm here for 47 School Street.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to the meeting. So we're here to review, and I believe this should be our last review of the special permit for the conversion of this dwelling. I am going to ask you if the... I'm just looking for the decision. No decision for 47 School Street. Sorry. I'm just going to review the conditions with you. I believe we only had one outstanding matter. So we had some items which needed to be completed, and I think were completed at the last meeting, and that was that the balustrade and hand railing needed to be reproduced, and that was done and acknowledged at the last meeting. And then the other one was the eaves being repaired with trim matched more closely to the original trim. And that, I think, was the condition that was outstanding. Your family member, father?
Father.
Father, had forwarded a picture of the repair that was made to the eve, and I think all board members have received it. But if not, Ms. Mata has a copy of that in her notebook that she can pass around.
Doesn't show it. Yeah, that's what we need to see.
That's what we needed to have fixed.
But this photo doesn't show that.
So I am going to try to share my screen on this because I do.
This was the one that was improper.
The eve, yep, not the porch, the eve.
That one shows that there was a repair... The one I have shows that there was a repair made to the end of the eve.
Yes, where the board was put on upside down.
I'm going to try to bring it up on the screen right now. And I'm going to do that by trying to share my screen as promised. Okay. So on the screen, you should be able to see the picture that was forwarded by Mr. Tran.
Has the building been sold?
No.
Still listed?
It's still listed, Lita.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so just the remaining conditions, which will stay with the property, are that it's to be operated as a two-family with no more than three bedrooms per unit. The construction was to be in accordance with the plan. And I did visit, and I saw that the parking area was paved today. The fence was up, and the stone wall was completed, and the colors had been changed to colors which were historically accurate. Thank you for that. I did see that the rear emergency staircase on the exterior had also been painted in accordance with the color scheme. Retaining wall to be constructed of stone, fencing to screen both the rear and the side of butters to be built on the property. Construction completed within 12 months. I think we're within the timeframe, which is great. The property site to be kept clear of debris. It did, other than needing lawn mowing, as we all do after this week of rain, appeared to be clean today. Dumpster is off the property, and construction vehicles are off the property. And so, do you have any comment that you would like to add?
I do not, no.
Okay. I'll entertain any comments on the completion of the conditions from the board members.
Hearing none.
Hearing none. All right, I'm going to close this hearing, and we're going to move to deliberation. Any further comments and deliberation? Seeing no hands raised.
Mike, is that okay with you?
It's adequate.
Okay.
There are portions of the construction that we really liked. There were portions that we were less than thrilled about. That is one of them, simply because it's kind of an obvious repair without any kind of... I know that there was a cut made to match the profile, which is wonderful. The marrying of the two seams is not particularly great. But your parents put a lot of effort into the construction of the stone wall and the addition of the fence, and I would like to thank them for that because it did... They did work to preserve the exterior historical architectural elements of that property, so we do appreciate that. And so, on that note, I would be looking for a motion in the affirmative to approve the review.
Make that motion under ZBA 2022-01 for 47 School Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. So the review is approved, which means the certificate of occupancy can issue if it's otherwise warranted. The ZBA would not be barred to obtaining that certificate of occupancy. I am just going to note to you that the property is to be used under the special permit only as a two-family, not other uses. And so you would require permission from the board, or any owner would require permission from the board if any other use were contemplated.
Okay.
All right. Best of luck with the sale, and good luck in the future.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
All right.
Okay, I'm John.
We are now moving on to the next matter, ZBA 2022-30. This is for 80 South Street. Is anybody present to speak on this matter? Okay. Could you approach and have a seat at the table? This is the review of a special permit to alter an existing non-conforming structure for a substantially different purpose as a multifamily dwelling located in residential C. Gentlemen, if you could each state your name and address for the minutes.
Tony Molina, 80 South Street.
Thank you.
Barry Cutler, 80 South Street.
Thank you. Okay. So we are here for review on the special permit, and I think we are still mid-construction at this point, right? I did receive some feedback on this matter, and we did, of course, have the site plan approval issue on this property from the planning board. So I would like to start by reviewing the conditions. When you started, you had estimated 15 to 18 months for construction to be completed, depending on how things went. So the very first thing I'm going to review is the makeup of the units. One studio apartment over the garage, one-bedroom unit, and five two-bedroom units. Has there been any change?
At this point, no, yeah.
Okay. "The exterior architectural elements to be preserved, restored, or accurately replaced. Design work around the windows and elements above the roofline, copper on top of the roof, and woodwork in the front peak." So this is something that I would like to reserve for some board questions to just make some inquiry and see what has been changed and what has not. I do know that one of the points that was discussed was the replacement of the slate roof. Has that proceeded according to plan?
We hire a company that specializes in a slate roof, so we restore all the slate roof, and it's going to stay as is, so we have rebuilt that.
And what was... There was a particular style I'll remember that the original roof was in.
We basically kept what's there, and we restored everything, so we rebuilt it.
Okay. And the next is that the interior architectural elements were to be preserved. That is, the entryway, coffered ceiling in the living room, the oak stairway, and all oak floors that have the ability to be restored. How have your efforts gone on that front?
It's... Yes, we have taken some out, but we have stored a special condition space so that we can put back some parts. But anything that didn't need to be removed is still intact.
So of the things that I listed, what has been removed?
Just some of the trim for some exterior walls to get insulation to meet the Hertz rating.
Okay.
But we'll put that back.
Okay. All right. "The property, including the landscaping, to be maintained during construction, debris to be picked up, and dumpster to be emptied regularly." Has that been being done?
Yes.
And then we have expiration on sale or transfer from KMR2LLC. So is that still the entity that owns the property?
Yes.
Okay. And have you recorded the special permit?
Yes.
Have you provided a recorded copy to the building department?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Before I open it up to other comment, we have one response, and I believe this is from the planning department. Yep. The planning... Just letting us know that the planning board approved the special permit for the nine-unit development. Construction is underway, and refers us to the decision. This did come in at the last minute, so I am going to open it up to board, comment, and then just see if we have something we need to review in the site plan. All right. Mr. Gallagher, do you have any comment or questions for the petitioners?
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. I would first like to comment that I think the stucco repair, in terms of texture and the way it levels against the building, is an excellent job, and I was really impressed with how well it looks. My only concern is that it is a gray tone, and the building is sort of like a brownish tone, and I'm wondering if there isn't a plan to sort of color that gray to make it look uniform.
Yes, we do. We have planning on painting the whole house and trim on the exterior to match, so everything looks intact, like as if we haven't done any patching.
Okay. And what type of paint will you use for that?
Especially for concrete, for mason, it's paint with texture for concrete especially.
And will the color be similar to what the building currently is?
It's going to be a little lighter. We are in certain areas on the soffits. You can see that when the building was originally painted, we found some areas covered that was a little lighter, and so we're going to try to match that.
Okay. Okay. I'd also like to comment on the roof. It looks like they did a nice job repairing the Munson roof, and I also want to compliment you on the color of asphalt you used in the back to sort of blend with it. So the fact that the copper is intact on the roof is quite impressive, because when you descend the hill, that's a building that you look and you look at, and it's kind of like you're arriving into Pittsburgh. So I really appreciate the job you did on that. I noticed there was a chip on the bottom stair of the granite where the railing was. What is your intent to work with that?
Yep. Actually, what we are going to do is, on the porch side, we have three pieces of granite that we only need two of them. The third one is just holding the top stairs, so we measured it already. We're going to carry that to replace the one with the chip on the first step, face of the street.
Okay, good.
It's going to match.
Good.
And in that porch, we're going to rebuild it with granite that we restored from the property from other areas.
Okay.
So it's going to look like original to the house.
Nice touch. In terms of the walkway between the stairway and actually the entrance front door, what is the plan for that?
That's going to be brick, right?
Yes. So we actually started that process already. I was hoping we were going to be farther along when you guys came by, but we're restoring the brick the way that the top stairs are to match that, and then we'll reposition all the blue... I mean, the granite, the first three steps, and we're going to carry that with the brick.
Okay. Okay. One more comment. When I was in the building today, your foreman was nice enough to let me walk around. And what was really impressive to me is that the hardwood floor that was already taken up, he was painstakingly removing all the nails so that it could be repurposed onto another section, so I was impressed by that. So I think you're doing a great job, so keep the good work. Yep. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Byrne, any comments or questions?
Mr. McLaughlin and myself were over at the property this evening. It looks like they're doing a wonderful job over there. Everything is... Meets the conditions that I saw, and I have no problems. I wish all the people that came to build something here in Pittsburgh did it with the same expertise and quality workmanship as these fellows have done it.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. And Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Same comments, you know, that Joe had mentioned. What they've done to this point is very, very good work. They're paying attention to the detail. It's going to be, you know, exciting to see that building and how it comes across the finish line. I really, you know, it's historic property, and thank you for your efforts so far, and I can only say that I'm sure when you come to the finish line, it's going to be a nicely done project. So the reuse and repurpose of components throughout, you know, on the property and in the building, it's very nicely done. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you.
I will add that I am glad to see the respectful treatment of a historical building in the city, and I look forward to the project's completion. Because the conditions of the planning board and the site plan review are also conditions of the ZBA, I'm just going to review a few of them with you for an update. "Applicant must confirm with water department that suitable water service exists at the property and is responsible for upgrading or replacement if needed." Has that been taken care of, and how?
Yes, it's in the works. We have done the... We're going to replace everything coming into the building, all the utilities.
So it required replacement?
Yeah.
And I take it that also applies to the sewer, which is the next condition?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have an existing two-inch water line, which we're going to keep, but we're going to add an additional one.
Oh, good. Well, that'll be good.
For the fire service.
Well, it'll be nice if one fails, you'll have an automatic backup. It won't have to dig again.
Yeah.
Rehabilitation of the sidewalk and curbing along South Street, is that in the works or in the future works?
Future.
Future. We are looking to finish all the utility work first.
Yep.
Get it right to the end, because you'll get it, you know, reused.
No point in replacing a sidewalk twice, no. You've submitted a landscaping plan with the relocation of the dumpster to the planning board? Okay. And do you have the EV charging stations located?
We... Yes, we are setting up some future on the back corner of the building. There'll be two stations for EV.
Okay. Did that require an upgrade of the electrical service?
Yes, we are upgrading the whole system in the building with ample...
So you're doing it anyway?
Yes.
You're going to have, as I recall, you're retaining ownership, so you are going to have professional management of the building in place. And then the last one I wanted to check, we have a three-year deadline for completion. Are you still within your 15 to 18 months projected?
Yes, I... We are, you know, I'd say realistically early 2024.
Early 2024, okay. All right. If there are no further questions on this review, what I'd like to do is close the hearing and then ask board members whether there are any conditions to be added and a review date, because I think a review date prior to completion is warranted. Although if it's early 2024, it's always a little hard to review in the snow and ice. So... Any other conditions to be added? Any comments on a review date?
Probably make in the early December. Six months, yep.
Do you think that you'll have made substantial progress and be near completion at that point in time?
Yes, I think, definitely, yeah. Mostly of the outside our target is to get all the exterior work and, you know, most of the exterior work done by November, you know, before the deadline of weather.
So our December meeting is December the 12th, which is always Tuesday. Does that seem like it's going to be within your timeline? Okay.
Yeah.
Then I would like to entertain a motion on the continuation of the review until the December meeting, December 12.
I'll make that motion under ZBA 2022-30 for review for 80 South Street in December of 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? So we're continuing the review. We will see you in December. My understanding is that you do need a review prior to the certificate of occupancy issuing. So if... I will counsel you two things. Number one, if you're finishing substantially earlier to contact the board to see if we can work something out, if you are going to not have made much progress for some reason, please contact us to ask for a continuance, because we would like a review hearing where we're pretty close to the end. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your work on this project, and have a lovely evening.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
For your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Now, our next matter... Hold on for one moment. Why is that so delayed? I'm going to assume there's a reason.
I just want to let you know what's going on. There it is.
Yeah, that's strange. Okay. So we're going to go on to the next item, which is ZBA 2021-27. This is for 808 Main Street. This is a review of a variance. This is not a variance. This is a special permit. There was an application that was for a variance, a special permit, and an appeal in this matter, but what was actually granted was a special permit.
Special permit, yep.
Yeah. So this is a review of a special permit to open and operate a cold storage warehouse that is not allowed pursuant to 181.313E3 in the downtown business district. And because the application was for multiple forms of relief, including a special permit, there ended up being a special permit issued for reinstatement of a pre-existing non-conforming use. And that was a cold storage warehouse. So, welcome.
Thank you.
This evening. Please state your name and address for the board.
My name is Jimmy Papas, and I live at 97 Town Farm Road in Westminster.
Thank you. So we're here for the review meeting, and this is, as I recall, the second time that we've had a review meeting. The last time was in November, and at that point in time, the storage space was certainly not in operation. Can you tell us what progress has been made? Last time, you worked on upgrading the electrical gas meter and had hired a roofing company. So what's been going on?
Well, basically, all that's taken place since then is that the brand-new roof went on, which was a huge endeavor. That finished about three weeks ago, and I really can't do anything else to the inside of the building until the roof gets put on. But at the same token, it's really just not just... That's not the only reason why it hasn't gone forward. Since then, we had finished Dario's Restaurant, which had taken a lot longer than we had thought, and since then, I've moved on to Carol's Dairy Bar, which we believe is now opening on Friday. Renovated the inside of that and all new equipment, and then the next thing we'll be doing is the 808 Main Street. But it's been a big expense, and it's tough to pull on so many projects. I'm a little bit older, and I'm trying not to carry too much debt, so I'm trying to do this out-of-working capital, and that slows things up a little bit as well, but it's part of the strategy. I hope that the city sees that the projects that I do take on, that I do quality work and things happen, but I'll be honest, too, they don't go at the pace that I wish they would go at, because no one wants to have 12,000 square feet empty on the second floor in downtown Main Street when things are starting to bustle. So I want to move more quickly as well, but with all the things that are happening, it hasn't gone as fast as I want. But the roof is on, so now I can start to do some things inside as well.
So I'm just going to say an encouragement of that. One of the reasons that the special permit was allowed was because you were experiencing a financial hardship in the carrying of the building without finding adequate tenants down there, and it's now been a year, and you've continued to carry the expense, you know. So I would generally think that if the expense was a substantial hardship, that you would have moved quicker to renovate the space. the space. So as you know, special permits do expire at some point in time if they're not put into substantial use. I am not sure, although I acknowledge you've made the roof repair, acknowledge you've made the utility upgrades. Speaking just as one board member, because those aren't really specific to the use that was approved, I am not positive that I would say that that was putting the special permit into substantial use yet. So I just, I would caution you to be mindful of that deadline. Okay? Has the decision been recorded with the Registry of Deeds?
No, it has not.
Okay.
I received a phone call just recently from the Building Department saying that that had to been recorded. And I, I should know that, but I wasn't aware of it, to be honest with you. I didn't remember that. And I do have to just dig it out to do it, because it was a while ago that you guys granted the special permit.
We can always issue another copy for recording?
Oh, no, I have it.
Okay, yeah.
I save every piece of paper.
But just so you know, it says it right on the bottom of every permit. So that is another item that, of course, implicates the fact of whether or not the special permit has been put into use yet. So I would, if you do want to use a special permit, I would counsel you to record it.
I will. I'll do that next week.
We have a number of conditions on this special permit. Have any, it doesn't really sound like, because the, the work has been general, I'm going to guess that none of them have been met at this point in time.
No, no, they haven't read. I mean, just to put things in perspective, the roof is an $85,000 purchase. It's significant. I know no one sees the brand-new roof that went on. There were two HVAC systems that had to be removed from there. It's extensive. And then to do anything to the inside of the building, when you're leaking during the winter and trying to get through that, it was very difficult to do that. And that has been completed. So no, none of the other, other issues have been, which is basically the camera system. Elevator is still an issue. The elevator was working intermittently. We brought in two separate elevator companies, and now I'm being told that the elevator has to be replaced, not just tinkered with. So that's another expense that, you know, could cause a little bit of a delay. But these are big items. They're not, you know, we have to paint the building, or we have to do landscaping. They're significant. And I'm willing to take care of it and do it. The building is up and running. It's not an eyesore. The LED light sits go on. They come on, they light the place up all night long, inside and out. But things take time, and they take, they take money, and they take capital to get these things done. Not making excuses, my question I had to the board, I guess, is that how does, is it harmful to the city if I take longer than I should take? I've moved slowly with Goodfellow Drive when I did that subdivision. I moved slowly with the renovation of the restaurant and the condos upstairs. I'm not that fast. I take my time, and I try to finance it to a point where it makes sense for me. But what is the board's attitude with that?
So what I would, as one board member and only one board member, having the vacant space on Main Street is, of course, you know, always an issue. If it's being kept artificially vacant because there's work to be done, that hasn't been done yet. I'm also going to choose this time to share the, the Planning Department's comment on this review. In 2021, the Community Development and Planning Department had recommended against the issuance of this special permit. Since the effective date of this decision, December 13th, 2021, apparently there, there's not been a substantial use thereof or construction thereunder towards this proposed cold storage warehouse use. If the applicant is not proceeding with this use, we suggest that the proposal be withdrawn or that the ZBA rescind the special permit. So that's the comment of the Planning Department on the fact that the, the request, which was granted, hasn't been completed yet. I am going to switch to questions from other board members. First, I'm going to, there are a limited number of persons here. I'm just gonna note today, and there are no persons online. But is anybody who is here, here to comment on this matter? Okay. I'm gonna turn to board members now, and Mr. Byrne, I'm gonna turn to you first. Nothing to say. Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm quite happy that, to know that the roof is done on the building. From working on properties for many years myself, I know that that's a major endeavor. And if you were able to do it for 80,000, I think you'd get a good deal on it. Keeping the weather out is essential to preserving a building. So I'm, I'm really happy with that. The fact that you're going a little slower and you're doing a quality job with it, I'm okay with that. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, I would call it a unique building on Main Street. It's probably, other than its design, because it's different, it's in very, very nice condition, and he keeps it very clean. And I know the city has tried to help the applicant repurpose it with some tenants. I know that the applicant is doing his due diligence to find a good use and a good fit for the building. There is, as he mentioned, a lot of cost to carry the building. He's invested a lot of money. And I know if a good use, because he has mentioned this, a better fit than the cold storage comes around, he's probably gonna look at it. So I think that we need to be patient. It's all about aesthetics on Main Street. If I could just throw one comment out there, when you get some time, maybe if you could do a little of the landscaping out front that you had talked about. But other than that, the building is neat, it's clean, it's well-kept, and he's, he's moving ahead. At the applicant's pace, yes, but it's a big endeavor. And I still look up and down Main Street and see a lot of people that should at least clean their property, wash their windows, and put some paint on the building. And Mr. Pappas is doing that. So it's moving a little slower than we all would expect, but I think we're gonna get there. And he's done a good job with everything else that I've seen in the city. And I'm okay with another continuance. And if we get close to the expiration of that special permit, which is what, two years?
There was an amendment in the statute which allowed it to go up to three years, but I think that this was granted before that amendment occurred. So I think we're in the two-year-by-statute time period.
So he's, he's got some time. You know, I can appreciate the comment from the, I know there are city employees that have been against this since the beginning, but we're doing, he's making an investment on Main Street, and a lot of property owners aren't, a lot of property owners are. So thank you. I'd like to say, let's just keep working with Mr. Pappas and, you know, let progress take its path.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Definitely have a defender on the board, I think, more than one. And Dario's renovation over there has been exquisitely done. So I very much appreciate the work on that.
Thank you for the comment. I appreciate it.
I do not want you to, by accident, run afoul of this deadline. The decision was December 13th, 2021, which means two years is coming up this December. And so what I'd like to do is schedule you for review in November, so that you can give us an update. If you have put the special permit into substantial use by that point in time, it's definitely going to include recording at the Registry of Deeds as well as the use of the property. Then the two-year deadline will no longer apply.
Good.
Okay? That's what you need to do to get over that hump.
Gotcha.
The November meeting is November the 14th. Okay? I don't really want to put an extra condition on there, that the permit will expire if you don't record the decision. But if you don't record the decision by the next meeting, it's gonna have consequences for you, so.
My office is a block from here. I shouldn't have a difficulty doing it.
Okay, good. I'd like to entertain a motion then on the continuance of the review.
I will make the motion under CBA 2021-27 for the property at 808 Main Street for a continuance until November of 2023.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? We'll see you on November the 14th. Good luck between now and then.
Thank you, board members. I appreciate it.
Thank you. The next matter is ZBA 2022-31. This is 56 Cully Street. This is the review of the special permit to open a motor vehicle body and paint shop located in the neighborhood business district. And welcome to the meeting. Please have a seat at the table and state your name and address for the minutes.
Sit down, hombre.
Yeah.
Y la dirección?
56 Cully Street.
Thank you.
Ricardo Rojo, come, help him a little bit with the English.
That is fine. Just need you to.
Who's gonna help you?
Nobody. I gotta do whatever I can do.
All right. And just your name and address for the record, sir.
56 Cully Street.
Thank you. So we are here for review. At the last meeting that we saw you, that was in January. And at that point in time, the special permit was granted with a number of conditions. What I would like to do is review those conditions and have you respond on whether or not they've been met, what the status is. So the first is that it's to be used for motor vehicle body repair and painting only with two bays, including the spray booth, and no non-auto body repairs or sales or other services. Are you open for operation yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
The reason why they're not open for operation is, for example, if you see this picture, right, it shows the original overhead door, and it's always painted in the garage. Here is no painting, because it's gonna be a second overhead door for the spray book. To, it's gonna be a easy exit and entrance for the car gonna paint. You know, they're gonna come out for the other one and gonna in, you understand? It's coming out here, going in the other future overhead door. So this is the other side of the building where they painted already. So it's only one piece, no painting yet, because they're gonna put a new door.
Okay.
So he already had a permit for the city hall to get the, I can show you to you guys. So there's just a matter of time till they come and do it now. But approach to you guys again.
Okay.
Excuse me. That's the permit just over there.
And it's a new permit for the electrician to.
So I'm just going to note for the minutes that this is permit number B-23-654 to open an existing cinder block wall in the left front of the building to install a new overhead security door, nine-foot height. And since that's already ready in the city record, I'm not gonna ask to keep your phone. But I, any of the pictures that you would like us to see, we do have to keep for the minutes, so.
This is about, basically what we have here. It's like a two big doors.
Yep.
So one is for our painting, and then you put cars in. The other one on the dumpster wing. So I'll give you all pictures. Here behind the building, we made like a concrete parkway, so the money is to keep it clean, because always in the back of the building is kind of not really good. And now we're trying to make, we just put one permit to see how it moves, cases are getting in the other side, just to get more clean and more privacy. The idea is continuing with that, if you guys okay. This is the side of the building. And here is the, this is no painting yet, because this is the original overhead door, and here is where I'm gonna be the second.
Well, that answers one of my questions, which, because the building looked half-painted.
Yeah.
And I wonder why anyone would do that. So if you could have a seat, I'm gonna continue going through the conditions. So the provision is for professional signage only, no vinyl banners. There's no sign up there yet, correct?
He's trying to finish everything to make a sign, you know?
Okay. Are you going to do the sign yourself, or are you going to contract out for it?
He's probably gonna do, use DNG. We always use a company there in Route Number Three, right at the end, the Cully Street.
Okay.
They give you ideas how the sign can be to look professional.
Not to be operated as a public or private nuisance. Not in operation yet, so not an issue. No offensive fumes or odors, and no outside storage of vehicle parts. There's no parts on the outside, right?
No, absolutely nothing.
I don't have nothing there, no.
The dumpster is to be located within the fenced area. Is it there?
We don't have the dumpster yet, because he don't operate it. It's gonna be inside there where the fence is.
Okay. Any unregistered cars to remain on the property, no longer than two months? There's no vehicles on there? Parking according to plan, submitted. Hours of operation, eight to six. Inspections from Building and Fire Department to be completed for the spray booth prior to certificate of occupancy.
Right.
Have those inspections been completed?
No, because the spray book is not ready, is not complete yet. Has to be the door done.
The door first, and then that.
Yeah. And, and the electrician has to come to connect. The spray book is inside, or has to be finished by the electrician, which one is gonna be together. We have just the permit to for the electrician.
So the exterior to be painted by May 31st. The existing fence to be replaced with chain link painted black with privacy flats. So that is, that is not black. Is it going to be painted?
If you want me to paint it, we can paint it. No problem.
So I, I know another board member has a question on the painting. Pave the parking area with asphalt within one year, so we're not within that time period. Okay? I am going to, yes. So I'm gonna give it over to Mr. Byrne at this point.
I would just like to look at this and say that the fence that they have up there looks very good, and it matches the gray of the building. So if we make him paint it black, it's gonna really stand out compared to what it is now. I'd like to pull that black off of there and let them keep it as silver, if it's.
That would require, we'd need to modify, so.
Right.
Yep, okay.
I'd just like to, you know, bring that up and see if anybody else thinks about that also. Mike says, yeah.
I think there's some concern about whether or not the paint would adhere very well to the metal as well, and I would rather not have a pour, a pair, a paint job that wears off myself. So. Any other comment on any of these conditions?
I gotta ask you something.
All right.
Our idea is continuing the color of the building. The fence painted gray with the same lines the building have, continuing the fence. If you look at in the picture, you're gonna see two lines.
Yep.
And we're trying to put it about, so like, the whole thing looks one thing, so.
Beautiful.
The thing is gonna look much better, the black here, silver over here, gray, I don't know. It's up to you guys. That's our idea.
One question to the people out here, you fellows. There is a red post along the drive in the front of the place on the, on the, if you're looking at the building on the Mariana side. Over on the side, there's a pole. And after the pole, there is a wood chipper, a trailer, two cars. Is that on your property, or is that pole the separate?
Somebody else, then. We, our property goes up to the wall of the building. You know, so the, the line is the wall, basically, with a.
So you have no parking spaces whatsoever on that side out after the wall?
No.
Anything near it?
Those vehicles belong to that gentleman across the street that we talked to briefly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher, any comments or questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I know that you have said that there's a portion of the building that remains unpainted because a door is gonna be installed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, when is it? Do you have that door scheduled? Is there gonna be an installation date on that?
Okay, the contractor is waiting for the biggest steel mirror is gonna go in the-
The header, yeah.
The head, they have to, they say they have to open it, put the steel, so later they can break it down the rest and nothing happen with the building. So, the contractor, they say, supposed to come between tomorrow and the next day. Soon as they had that piece, they're gonna start with that. Later, after everything, the support of the building is done, they just tear it down, the wall. That's what I believe.
I have the estimate for that overhead door too, because the company's over there, and they give me the price for that.
Okay, that's the price for the overhead door. He already have the bill for the overhead door.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just a question.
Basically, they're waiting for the big piece of steel.
It's a back order or something. My contractor, he told me he got it tomorrow, possible.
Supposed to tomorrow.
Okay.
In terms of painting the building, I'm wondering why you chose black on the back of the building and didn't make it uniform with the rest of the building, gray in the colors.
Oh, no, that's not the paint. That's, they put like a kind of insulation, like a-
Like a waterproof.
Is it tar?
Yeah.
Okay.
And later, it's gonna be the paint, but they say, let it sit down for a little bit before we paint anything.
Yeah.
It's just for insulation.
Needs to level and settle.
The humidity goes inside the building.
Yep, yeah, cure properly. The sidewalk looks very nice around the perimeter of the building. I noticed past that, there still seems to be some debris. Is there a plan to trim some of those broken branches and clean that up a little bit in the back?
We cut a lot of those branches. They're working on it, so.
Yeah, the wood and, you know, various other little things. In the condition, we had talked about having the parking lot paved. I'm wondering if that has been scheduled yet?
No, not yet. It's not scheduled yet, no.
Not yet? That's down the road? Okay, and we talked about having designated parking spaces as well, when that is paved?
As soon as the paving, they're gonna be, by the plan, the parking space, paved by line. The line's yellow.
Okay.
Or white, well, it's either.
And I don't, I don't know. I kinda thought that a black chain link fence was gonna be installed.
I think that's what we talked about, or the request was, was a black chain link fence, not a fence painted black.
So, my question is, is-
I think you already put it in, right?
Yeah, my question is, is why was the decision made to do a solid fence? And is that gonna be the permanent finish, or is there a plan to paint it?
No, the plan is painted like the building.
You wanna paint it like the building?
Exactly like the building, so gray with the two lines.
So, will you use an enamel paint that can work with the metal?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
If you know, the first water storm or whatever, it's gonna-
All right.
It's gonna look worse.
Yeah, so an enamel paint, okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McGlaughlin, any questions or comments?
So, I told somebody in the Home Depot, I need to paint my building outside. He made the paint for outside the building, that the people working there in Home Depot. I don't know the paint of the building. I'm not the paint for the car. I'm painting car.
No, don't worry. What they asked me is, you make sure you put a real good paint, so they don't paint it out.
It's a good paint.
Okay.
I told the guy, give me the better one. I don't wanna paint in one more year or whatever.
Sometimes it's not the better one, it's the right one, right?
I'm pretty confident that if you can paint cars, you can paint a metal fence.
So, now that you've had your conversation with yourselves, if you could turn to Mr. McGlaughlin, who is here to ask your question.
Sorry, Mr. McGlaughlin, I apologize.
Thank you.
We had a condition to have the building painted by May 31st.
Yes.
So, just see if you can get that taken care of, get the whole building painted.
But the idea is, soon as the door is done, finish the back, and that piece where the door is, and the fence.
Okay. You know, we've got the, we've got the paving. Behind the building, we walked around back, and you put in the, kinda like walkway.
Yeah.
But there's still a lot of like wood debris. Not trees, but stuff that's still down in there. If you could just get that cleaned out. So, in the, in the, in the winter, when all the leaves are off of the trees, you've got residential houses up above, just so that looks clean.
Yeah, I'm agree with you.
I know that there are some challenges next door, and we hope we can get those fixed.
Oh, everything is gonna be-
But we want him to be-
Yeah, well, at least we can show, hey, if we can do it, you guys can do it too, you know?
So, I think that's all I have right now. I know he's kinda working through the fence.
Well, I, you know, as-
We can have another review, right?
But we should make a decision on whether the proposed paint plan is acceptable as an amendment to the condition because we have black in there.
Well, I think we had a black chain link fence with privacy slats.
That matched in color.
So, the question is, I do have a question. We had asked for a new black chain link fence with privacy slats that go in it. Is the fence that's there, is that the fence that was there when you bought the building?
No, it's all new, new, completely new.
Okay, okay.
It's like a pipes welding together. It's like a cross pipe like this. I don't know. It's a hard construction behind the metal.
Yeah.
You guys more than welcome to walk and look at it.
No, we already did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We were just talking about the fence being different than what we had all talked about, so I just think the boards, we're all gonna just kinda think through that piece of it.
So, um-
Maybe I misunderstood last meeting, when I try and apologize for that. When I understand what you guys want, the clear fence be privacy, so they no, nobody can see when they drive by what it is. So, the cheaper way probably can be one of those little things, sticking the fence. To paint that later is not gonna be that easy. And our idea is make the whole thing looks like a one unit. So, paint the building match with that. So, when you come out, you see the whole thing, one unit. That's why we trying to put that fence. I hope you guys know, give it a chance to try to paint and make it look good.
So, I, do you have another questions?
One comment, Madam Chair. I'm willing to allow them to paint it, to make the site look uniform. And I think at that point, we could decide if it is aesthetically acceptable. Instead of, you know, having them remove it and go back to the chain link fence with the privacy. I like the fact that if it was all painted harmoniously with the building, it would probably look pretty nice, maybe even better than the chain link. So, that's my comment.
The only question that Joe and I saw and kinda had was, all, a lot of this new metal that you put up is already damaged.
I don't know which one.
And I just, we want it to look good. Come on up. You know, we want it to look good, right? It's, it's a reflection on your business, but see, these are already damaged.
Okay.
And it's, it's brand new.
Well, before, the painting has to be right, so, because if you paint it, it's gonna be worse.
Well, that's it.
Yeah, let me show to him, please.
And that's, that's what I'm concerned about, is the long-term- It's like painting a car that has dents in it.
Yeah. Well, we can fix that.
So, I think this property owner will be uniquely able to fix this problem because it's within your chosen profession. It's within what you do for a living. But I, I'm just gonna say, Mr. Antonio, I, I don't mind the modification. I, I think the modification is a good idea. What I don't like is modifying the conditions that the board set out without asking the board, so.
That's why I say, I think I misunderstood you guys.
I'm just gonna say, in the future, in the future, sir, if you're gonna change something that we have set forth as a condition, come back to the board and ask us, okay? Not saying, we'll say no. But if we set something forward as a condition, it, it's a condition for a reason, okay?
Thank you.
Anything more to add before we move on? Okay. And I do like the color scheme on the building. I think it's neat. So, as I'm looking at these conditions, the ones which are going to require modification would be the description of the fence, the timeline for completion, and the timeline for completion of the building. Any suggestions from board members for a review date with modification of conditions?
Six months?
September, October?
The, um, I don't know that we, we did not put in a specific condition prohibiting a certificate of occupancy from issuing before completion of the conditions. And if the conditions are completed before October, you would therefore be able to approve that to the Building Department and then proceed, so. Do you think that you will be either completed or substantially completed by October?
He say yes, but by October, he can do it. And by that time, he can tell you timeframe for the paving too, because we have that pending, right?
The painting to be completed, the fence to be completed.
Yes.
And the, and the door?
Oh, the brand-new door too there.
And the cleanup in the back?
Mm-hmm. I told him already about trying to make a, like a nice clean hell down, no, like bushes everywhere.
And what about the paving of the parking lot?
Well, I believe by October, by the next meeting, we can have a realistic idea, the day and timeframe for the-
The cutoff date is usually in November for paving?
I know, I know, so hopefully even that is be done.
Okay, okay, just something for you to keep in mind.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I note that we have a January 10th deadline for completion of the paving. I think that you're going to exceed that, but I do not want to amend that. I personally do not want to amend it until we get to the next review. I want to know how much closer you are, so. But, and the fewer times you have to come back here, the better.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Should the pavement, paving be done by the review period? Because then we're going into winter, and then it's gonna be mud.
So, I, the current deadline is January 10 for that paving to be completed.
Paving is typically until?
November.
November.
Thanksgiving.
The applicant was given one year to complete paving, and that's the one-year date.
We, we're gonna try, but worst case scenario, maybe we can have it done, the, the base this year, and as soon as they start next year, then we finish paving or something like that. Maybe we all had done, I, I don't wanna say something and it's not gonna be true, you know, because he's, that's what he really wants, to have it done.
I looked it for somebody, he gave me the, I think, two weeks ago, he gave me the one estimate, but he very expensive, you know, I'm waiting for another people, you know?
He already asked for a price for the company.
So, I, I'm, at this point, I, I don't think we have a clear idea, and I don't want to change the date without a clear idea.
Okay.
So, I would still be looking for an October review with modification of the conditions, so. Any proposal on modification of the conditions?
I guess how we, how do we want to word the fence piece of it?
The existing fence is to be replaced with a chain link fence painted in uniformity with the color scheme of the building.
Perfect. Did that Mercedes? Yes, and I guess with that, I'll make a motion for review in November. And just wanna make a comment that, let's try to get the paving done for November. We give you to January, but basically December and January, you can't pave anyways. So, it's not really a we'll try thing. We would like to have that done as part of the condition for us giving the special permit, so that the project at the end of this, going into the end of this year, it's complete.
Okay, and what about the fence? Can we paint the fence, or we need to go back to the painted?
We're modifying the condition-
For you to paint it.
For that, okay? So, I'm gonna make that motion under ZBA 2022-31 to amend that one condition as noted by the chair and for a continuance until November 2023.
Second.
Would you modify the motion to also amend Condition 10 for the painting of the building to be completed by?
So moved.
Thank you, by October.
Did you say October or November?
You said November, didn't you?
Was it October?
I said October. Did you say November just now?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay.
So, November 14th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? So, we'll see you in November. Again, because the special permit doesn't require approval from the board before the certificate of occupancy issues, if you complete the conditions beforehand and provide proof to the Building Department, they can approve the certificate of occupancy and you can open.
Okay.
Okay? So, that means the quicker the work gets done.
The quicker you can work.
The quicker you can open. Good luck and have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. Our next matter is ZBA 2022-14. This is 76 Summer Street. This is the review of a special permit under 181.94 to operate an adult daycare service pursuant to Section 181.313(c)(1) in the Neighborhood Business District. Yeah, I don't, there is-
I think that's the goat lady.
I don't see him, Madam Chair.
I'm gonna note for the minutes that there is no person present in the meeting area. I am also going to check and be sure we have no, no persons waiting to be heard online. And the good Mr. McGlaughlin is double-checking to make sure whether we have anybody in the hall. Did we have any communications on this matter?
No, I don't have anything from him.
Okay.
I wonder how come our screen up there doesn't show what's going on?
I know that there is a little bit of delay, but I think that's a bigger delay. But I did have the share screen on perhaps a little longer.
Okay. No, Jan, you will step in.
All right, so we have no persons present to speak on this matter. Neither the applicant nor any other person in the hall. Does any board member wish to make a comment on this review?
Madam Chair, I'm just a little concerned about where he stands and turns, and he's not here to answer the questions. I understand that, but I'm just a little concerned with where he stands with the permitting from the state. It's unfortunate that he isn't here right now to answer those questions. But that's the only comment I have to make. We don't have much to go on without him being here.
I would comment that I know- Uh, I would comment that I know.
You lie, I don't know if you want to.
Thank you. I know that the, um, there was supposed to be an outdoor recreation or outdoor sitting area constructed, and I didn't see any evidence of that.
Right, and we, last time we were there, nobody, it wasn't even occupied.
Right, I noticed that as well, which raises the concern that maybe there's some difficulties with permit, permitting on a state level of why he hasn't moved forward.
I did see that the, um, handicap access ramp in the front of the building had been recently paved with asphalt. I think that was one of the items that, uh, we had asked to be fixed by the property owner to repair the entranceway pavement.
Right.
So that did, I think that did get done.
Right.
That could have been for the building in general. You know, Brian made some good point that working with state agencies can be cumbersome and, and, and take a lot of time. Not an excuse that the applicant isn't here or at least reached out to the building department to say, um, they need some additional time. Maybe we should put this out a couple months. And, um, as we typically do, give an applicant, um, one opportunity to not show up and then we can re, reconvene in a month or two or three, whenever the board wants.
I'm generally, uh, inclined towards September. I don't know about the other board members.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Um, I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Mata, so is there a reason that is on the agenda for that month?
July?
Yeah, this matter is on the proposed agenda for July.
It was, uh, continuous for July on the last hearing on.
Okay, oh.
Is it on for this month?
We have a similarly numbered, uh...
Oh, okay.
Seventy, seventy-six of a different street.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, so I, I would be inclined towards, uh, September if nobody else has an objection to that. And I would also, um, uh, require that the app, the permit holder communicate a status with us prior to that hearing and appear at that hearing.
I'll make a motion on ZBA 2022-14 for Daniel Estevez at 76 Summer Street for a continuance until, um, the Pittsburgh ZBA September 2023 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none? Our next matter is ZBA 2022-33. This is 109 Oak Hill Road. This is the review of a special permit to open a restaurant, um, located in the Residential C District. Um, and I'm again going to note that we have no persons present in the hall and we have no persons available remotely.
Madam Chair, would you like me to check just to be on the safe side?
I would, I would. Thank you very much, Mr. Gallagher.
Work seems to have stopped on that.
Did it start?
Yeah, they have some work on ramps, but that was it.
I see some paving, pavement that is in worse condition than before.
Financing again.
Might be.
I know the applicant is doing some house rent, home renovations, so, don't know if this project is...
Lower priority.
Yeah, maybe.
Ms. Mata, do you know whether this special permit has been recorded?
It has.
Unfortunately, no, Madam Chair. He does not appear to be here.
I have the reason before me.
Oh, okay.
So we have an email from the applicant, uh, who apparently called on Wednesday?
Wednesday, yeah.
To, uh, ask for a continuance until September 12th of 2023. Um, has a continuance form been signed? Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair, could I add something?
Yes.
Would it be reasonable to make a request that the, um, site be cleaned a little bit better? There's some, um, unsightly trash behind it. A lot of overgrowth, moss growing all over everything. The parking lot has several pieces of broken pavement. And, you know, when you come up the street, it's right in clear view. If it could just appear to be not so vacant, I think it would be helpful to the community and the neighborhood in that area.
Mr. Gallagher, it's not only helpful, it's a condition of the special permit.
Okay, so if there's a way we could, um, communicate with him that that should be done.
I think, I think a, a communication would be appropriate. I don't know that, uh, we would be ready at this point for an enforcement request, but that is, you know, the next step after that.
Yep, okay. That's all I have to say on the matter.
Okay. Any other board member have a question or comment on this?
I don't.
Mr. Byrne is a no. Um, I will let you know that we do have a planning department comment. It states this variance, it is a special permit, issued in January 2023, had a condition stating, "Further site plan review under Section 181.513 is waived. Uh, we respectfully request that since this is a proposed change of use, that a site plan accompanied by a stormwater management plan be submitted to the planning board for a full site plan review." Um, so that's a request that we modify, uh, the decision that we made. I, uh, I have a concern of whether we would have the ability to modify our decision in that fashion.
Right.
But I'm also concerned that it has been, uh, two or three reviews now that we haven't seen the applicant and not a lot of progress made on the property.
Well, it's definitely a lack of cooperation in terms of that.
So, didn't this require site plan review?
We waived it.
We did?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
It was in the, it was in the application. It was discussed and we waived it.
That's unusual.
It is unusual. I think the reason was that there were no changes to the, um, or I'll say no substantial, no substantial changes to the footprint of the building. And of course, with every applicant, um, if there can be avoidance of a cost and a delay, I'm sure that's something desired. But, um, where we grant a relief in a special permit to go back and modify that relief, it is something that we say we can do within the context of, the text of every single written special permit decision. So I guess it's something that we could consider, that request.
Okay.
I just feel that it's kind of a gateway into that neighborhood. Um, I don't recall the waiver of that, but I certainly think it needs some extensive renovation to the site for improvement.
Well, perhaps, um, a site plan review, uh, would, which usually is gonna require a landscaping plan, um, and the details that go with that. And then specifically, the concern here is stormwater management. Um, you know, the city has been going through that major, uh, replacement project, and I don't know if that particular area is coming within, um, time for its replacement, so. Any other board member have a comment on that request?
When was the, um, this is special permit or variance?
Special permit.
Special permit.
And when did we? This?
So the meeting was in December of last year. January, the, um, decision was filed.
Still early in, in the two-year.
Mm-hmm. And it has been recorded, so they have complied with that provision.
Madam Chair, are you aware of, has there been any correspondence from him or communication with the building department recently?
The email requesting the continuance. And I recall that the last scheduled meeting, there was an email requesting a continuance. Um, and I believe the same is true for the first time. There was a requested continuance, although that may have been the snowstorm meeting.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I think it was.
I'll make the motion then, Madam Chair, for a continuance until September.
Is that motion accompanied by the modification of any conditions?
I'm gonna make that motion under ZBA 2022-33. And as far as the modification of the conditions with specific to the site plan review?
That would be Condition 12.
I won't put that in my motion until we discuss it. Does the board want to do that?
Okay. Do I have a second on the motion?
No, I'm asking a question. Does the board want to do that?
Let's deliberate on the question.
Okay, okay.
Now that we have a motion under consideration. And I assume the modification is to strike that condition.
I think it's gonna need site plan review.
I agree.
Okay.
I really do, 'cause it's a substantial parcel of property. And again, it's kind of that gateway as you come up and the roads all convene and, you know, it's, it's gonna...
Focal point, yeah.
It's gonna need to be done properly.
I will say that the pavement in the parking lot deteriorates more and more each day.
Yes, I noticed that during my last visit.
It's, it's strangely torn up. Um, so I don't know if there was some work done or what, but it is in worse condition, substantially worse condition than it started out in.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, at the decision meeting, the applicant had very nicely done all of the landscaping, cleaned up the lot, trimmed all the bushes, um, and it was nice and clean. Um, it has deteriorated in condition since then. So I, I think that the thought, which was that there didn't really need to be much attention paid to the exterior landscaping or lot, is not proving to be true.
Okay, so we're gonna strike 12. Are we gonna put in a condition that it requires site plan from?
We can.
Sure.
But it's, it's required under the ordinance unless struck, so.
Okay.
So I would, I would insert a condition proposed that site plan review be required in accordance with the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so I'll make that motion again under 2022-33 to strike 12 and put in the language as just stated by the chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? So that, uh, review, uh, is continued until... Mr. McLaughlin, what was the date you said? Did you say September?
September 2023.
Thank you, with Condition 12 modified as noted. All right. We are precisely on time. I would just like to note that this may be a first, um, to be so far down in the agenda and be precisely on time.
Spoke too early.
The next matter is ZBA 2023-10. That is 21 Union Street. This is the review of the special permit to reinstate the use of a vacant or abandoned building from a church to a single-family dwelling pursuant to Section 181.333 located in Residential C. And I am gonna note that we have, uh, no person in the, in the meeting hall.
I believe someone is coming in now.
Uh, we might have somebody in the, um, hallway.
Good afternoon.
Hello, are you here on 21 Union Street?
Yes.
Okay, could you please have a seat at the table and state your names and addresses for the record? Are you the owners or are you butters here to comment?
Uh, we're partners.
You're partners, okay.
Yes, there's three of us, and this is two of the three.
All right, and your name and address, please?
My name is Vanessa Sangster, and my address is 64 Middleton Street in Providence, Rhode Island, 02909.
Thank you. And you, sir?
My name is Edwin Bellis, and my address is, uh, 75 Beach Street in Pittsburgh.
Mm-hmm, okay. And have you recently become owners? Because there was a sale contemplated the last time, this was before the board.
Yes, we recently became owners of the property.
And you said there's three owners?
Yes.
Have you submitted a copy of the new deed to the building department?
Of the who?
The new deed to the property.
A new deed?
So you became the owners, that means that there's a change in the deed.
Yes, I'm pretty sure my, um, real estate agent submitted it.
Okay. So, uh, we're not in receipt of that?
Okay.
When did the sale take place?
I've got the date, sorry.
Okay. I'm gonna need you to hold on for a moment?
Sure.
Because I need to confirm that at the registry. Um, and I'm, uh, because, uh, we're on record, I don't write things down all the time, so I'm gonna ask you to repeat and spell your name for me. Sorry.
That's okay. My name is Vanessa Sangster, and my address is 64 Middleton Street in Providence, Rhode Island, 02909.
Okay. Did you buy it under a entity like a corporation or an LLC?
A LLC.
Okay, what is the name of the LLC?
C as in Calvin, E as in elephant, V as in Victor, E as in elephant, Properties LLC.
Okay, so on May 26th, you had a mortgage, um, and a deed. So, um, so the three partners are part, are all members in the LLC?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Please deliver a copy of the recorded deed to the building department. Um, and the building department generally needs, um, the owner of the property to apply for relief. And I understand, uh, we're here for review, but there's a request to change the special permit. Is that right?
I am, I'm not aware, ma'am. I, uh, I recently just found out about this meeting yesterday.
Okay.
I called the building department, I was like, um, do you know you have a meeting today at 7:25? I'm like, what meeting? So I'm not fully aware of what, um, was taking place and who they spoke to about this meeting. I just chose to be here to represent.
Okay. So, we appreciate you coming, because often there is a change in ownership and the meeting is not communicated, and the new owners feel that they don't have to show up, so I'm very glad you've come. Mr. Byrne, point of order?
I was just wondering, doesn't the owner of the property have to put in a petition to, uh, come before the board?
Yes, and this is review.
They need to come before us.
Yes.
So this is, we can't act on this?
We can't act on the, um, any request to change it. We, we had it for...
They have to get the new owner, they have to file.
But we had a review of the special permit that was issued under the old owner.
Is it recorded?
That's not them.
It's not recorded yet, but... Um, so, I, I think there's a number of issues that we, we need to resolve procedurally to substitute you, um, for the old owners. I, I agree with Mr. Byrne there. Um, have you, um, has the old owner told you about any of the conditions on the property?
No, I just know that it's, uh, it was recently a church, um, a church, and we're trying to convert it into a single-family.
Right. So, um, I, I will just review with you the conditions, and I'm gonna ask, I, I think that we come back after you, um, kind of, you know, let yourselves be known to the building department, make sure that you have, um, what you need in order to comply with the conditions, and, uh, really take a minute. The, um, single-family use is what was allowed, so you're not seeking to change it to anything other... was allowed, so you're not seeking to change it to anything other than single-family?
No.
Okay, that's good. Um, in general, uh, what we wanted was to make sure this was not used as student housing and not used as a lodging house, okay? So that, uh, generally means it can certainly be rented to one single-family, but you're not going to rent each separate bedroom to each, you know, a number of different students.
Okay.
Okay? The roof was to be removed and replaced.
Okay.
Um, snow stops were to be installed along the perimeter, although I think that, um, may be amended because it was gonna be an asphalt roof and the snow stops weren't needed anymore. Um, new vinyl siding to be installed, the windows to replace, no more than two and a half baths in the design, and that's, that's related, again, to making sure that its function stays as a single-family home and not student housing with a separate bedroom for each student, along with a separate bathroom for each student.
Okay.
The exterior renovation was to be completed within six months. And then the occupancy permit was to issue after the conditions were met. All right? So, um... Yes, so we have, um, Mr. Chartren present, um, and he is here for the next item, but, welcome to speak if needed. Um, I think that we should look for a continuance of this matter.
I agree.
Um, and I think, uh, the continuance, uh, should be in, for one month, um, so that we can address everything, but give you some time to catch up on it.
Okay, when will we get a copy of everything you just said?
Yeah, so that's one of the things.
Okay.
And, uh, the, the decision that you get will need to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds, okay? So, and you should do that right away as soon as you get it, okay?
We should ask about the driveway?
Mm-hmm.
We should ask about the driveway?
Um, yeah, that's one of the... Um, so I would be looking for a motion to continue this matter to the July meeting.
Okay, um, excuse me, one question.
So move.
Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Your question, ma'am?
Um, we, we wanted was to add a driveway. There was a previous driveway on the property, and there was an addition added over the driveway. Is, would it be a part of the whole plan to be able to demolish that section and, and re-uh, occur a driveway to enter into the property?
So...
I know it.
Your request is literally music to the ears of the board because one of our major concerns is that there is zero parking.
Okay.
And if you wanted to propose a change in the plan, which provided for removal of the, um, that wing and the addition of a driveway to service the property, um, I'm su-, you should submit that request to the building department for the next hearing with, you know, a plan describing what you wanna do and showing us what you wanna do. But I, you know, as one board member, I certainly would very much welcome there being off-street parking, so, and be very receptive to that request.
Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Would a certified plot plan be reasonable, um, before they go through the expense of doing that and that it could actually be a legal parking spot? The area is quite tight, and I'd hate to have them go through the expense of demolition only to find that they weren't in compliance.
That's an excellent suggestion. And, uh, so I don't know what your access is to an engineer or surveyor to obtain a plan and how quickly you would be able to do that.
So if there was, um, cuz when I, at the property, there was a, um, you could, at the front, you can actually see where there was pavement of a driveway. There's asphalt of a driveway that was there. They, so if you lift up the floor, there's a driveway underneath it. They literally just built over it.
Right.
All I'm asking is that if we tear down that addition that was added and get back the actual driveway that was there, I'm already spoke to DPW about the cutting of the front.
The curb, yeah.
Um, to, you know, they said I have to get a permit to do all of that with, to get the cutting of the front, but that's something I've already, like, asked about because there's already a driveway there.
So if I could add something, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just because previously there was a driveway, we're not sure if it's gonna meet the dimensional requirements-
Okay.
-for current parking. So like I said, I, I would hate for you to have to go through the expense of demolition and everything else just to find out that your square footage-
Okay.
-isn't adequate, you know?
So get a, a plot.
I think it would be prudent for you to do that.
Okay.
So a surveyor, what they'll be able to do is meet you at the property and properly measure to make sure that where the building gets removed, that it meets the criteria for a parking spot, which is nine feet wide by eighteen feet deep-
Okay.
-and allowing for a three-foot setback between the driveway and the abutter.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
And that's so that you actually have room to open your doors.
Got you.
So your doors don't open onto somebody else's property. But we actually had talked about that, um, during the initial application, and as Madam Chair said, it's music to our ears to hear that you actually wanna do that, so, so thank you.
So we'll look forward to seeing you at the July meeting. Um, if you, and that is on July the eleventh. Um, you will receive, if you can provide your contact information to the building department.
Okay.
Okay. Then, um, you can, uh, receive, uh, the agenda by email. Mm-hmm. Or it's also posted on the city's, uh, website under the agendas, okay? Um, and that should be up-
My card, so you can email me.
That's an excellent idea. So if you have a approach, Ms. Mata will give you her card, so you'll have her contact information.
Madam Chair, is thirty days-
Thank you.
-reasonable?
I don't think it's adequate to get the certified plan, um, but I would like an update, I think, given that we have new owners involved, so.
So having said that, I will make a motion under ZBA twenty twenty-three dash ten to continue, um, the special permit review for the property at twenty-one Union Street until July of twenty twenty-three. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? We'll see you in July.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. You said everything would be found on agenda on the building department once I submit my information to them, correct?
Correct, correct. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
They haven't wanna be on July.
I, I wanna see what's happening on the property, and I wanna ensure that the special permit is recorded, so I'm willing to at least take ten minutes and talk about them. So... Um, the next matter on our agenda, and once again, I'm just gonna announce that we are exactly on time, is ZBA twenty twenty-three dash nineteen. This is eight oh-eight Fisher Road. This is a request for a special permit under section one eighty-one point three-one-three-D1 to keep miniature goats on the property, um, with a yard less than five acres of land pursuant to section one eighty-one point nine-four, located in rural residential... And this is on Fisher Road. Okay, so...
Debbie, pull that microphone closer to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the hearing.
Thank you.
Can you please state your name and your address for the minute?
Deborah Lord, eight oh-eight Fisher Road, Fitchburg, Mass.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we are here to, on your application for a special permit. Um, can you take a moment and just briefly describe to us what you wanna do?
Um, we have two miniature Norwegian goats. We wanna keep them as pets, and it's because my son just got custody of his daughter, and we wanna teach her how to be responsible to take care of animals. She, um, is a little scared of my son's dog, but she's starting to come around, and the dog is, you know, getting used to her now. And she has two other mancun cats in the house.
Mm-hmm.
But this is basically to show her responsibility because my son got her through DCF, and the mother is no longer in the picture. And, um, we're trying to raise her, and we have some challenges, but we're, you know, we have a plot, we have it all fenced in for the goats. We have a house for them. We have two heaters, one for the winter for the water and one for the heat for inside their shed. Um, they have a tree for shade. They have a big rock they can climb on. They, um, and we're only keeping them as pets. We're not gonna keep them for, like, livestock or to milk them or... And then eventually we'll wanna see if we can put a leash on them to walk them around the yard.
Can you tell me what the life expectancy is of the goats?
Um, I know they're three years old right now. I think they can s- go up to fifteen to twenty years from what I was told.
Yep, that's correct. Fifteen is generally the life expectancy.
That's what I...
And are they-
There's another line here. It says, but they can live up to twenty-two years.
Uh, we're just, uh, comment, uh, discussing the fact that, um, the goats are likely to outlive your grandchild's, um, uh...
They'll probably out, they might even outlive me. You never know.
Are they both of the same gender?
Yes, they're both female.
Okay. Is there any, uh, thought to breeding them?
No.
Okay. Are you undertaking any kind of, um, veterinary care certification that they are treating for diseases?
Uh, yes, I have two vet, we already took, we took one to the vet already. I have immunization papers. They've already, one has already been... Had rabies shots and had... Christie already had, um, part of her horn removed because it was growing, it's starting to grow into her brain.
Mm-hmm.
So we had to have that cut off, so we brought her last Friday to, um, have it done, and, uh, she got her shot, and next Friday, the other goat gets her rabies shot.
So your lot is a, uh, an acre and a third?
Yes.
And you've given us a hand-drawn picture?
Yes.
Um, and this is an already-built goat area, and you already have the goats?
Yes. That, we just got them three weeks ago. We didn't think we were gonna get them that quickly.
Um, so the fence is sixty by forty right now, and it's constructed, it's four feet high?
Yes.
How tall are the goats?
They're like maybe twenty-four to thirty inches, not even thirty. They're like two feet high.
They're relatively small.
I'm just saying, wondering-
They, um, they're not the size of a regular goat. They're miniature.
Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm just wondering, knowing that goats are so proficient at jumping, whether four feet is tall or not.
The only one that jumps is the darker one, and he only does it when he has, when he gets excited, when he has his baby carrots.
You mean she?
She. I don't know why I said he.
Okay. Um, and then is, uh, is it, is it, uh, chicken wire? Is it, uh, wooden board fencing? What's the fencing material?
Um, it's wire and it's posts, and we got them staked, we got that staked in too, and it's all wired.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair, it isn't chicken wire. It's a thicker gauge of wire.
Thicker gauge.
Yep.
Did you, um, sink the posts in with concrete footings or no?
Yes.
How far down did you go with the concrete footings?
We went with it, so because it was, we thought it would be more sturdy because it's on a hill, and we weren't sure how the ground was.
Mm-hmm.
So I had, when my son did the post hole, he dug the po-, he dug the holes, we put the concrete in around it to secure the posts.
How deep?
Over six feet each post.
It's unusually deep.
Well, he just wanted to make sure.
Um, how big is the shed that you've built, uh, which I assume is where they're going to be stored during winter?
Yes, um... I think it's, I, I'm just trying to... It's over six feet high, and I think maybe eight feet high. It's probably ten by ten or ten by twelve, I'm thinking.
It looks to be more like twelve to me.
Twelve?
I didn't measure it, but visually.
Yeah.
Did you pull a permit for the shed?
My son had built it at his boss's house, and he's the one that, um, brought it by trailer to our house. It came from my son's boss, the two goats.
Okay. How far away from the property boundary on the side street is the goat fence? It's not marked on your plan.
Two sixty... The houses probably... I know my boundary line's a two sixty back and two sixty, it's two sixty all the way around.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would say at least, I'm not exactly sure. I'm gonna give you a figure, but I'm not exactly sure. I'd say maybe, uh, fifty to sixty from the driveway, but they're in back of the barn, so... Probably seventy-five?
Yeah, looks to be about seventy.
So seventy-five from Fisher Road?
Yeah.
No.
From the side?
From the-
From the side, I think, is seventy.
Okay. Yeah. Where are you storing the feed?
In the barn.
And where are you storing the waste?
Um, he's, my, my son's gonna compost that. We're gonna put it in the garden. We've got a compost right near the garden in the back.
Where is it stored right now?
Uh... The-
Waste?
The waste, he has it, um, he just put it in a pile for right now. He's gonna start putting it in the compost.
Okay. Okay, um, we have some comments, but I am... I'm gonna need to go through the special permit conditions with you. Um, you submitted a, a note, uh, but there are questions that we have to have applicants respond to for a special permit that were in the application. So I will go through those with you at a, a later point. Uh, for right now, we did receive an email, um, from Ralph Miller in Abutter, and, uh, I, which I have to read into the record. Dear Mercedes, as we talk today, here is a summary of our discussions and my concerns. Number one, does a special permit go on forever? If so, does it transfer to the new property owners? Number two, will there be limits set as to how many and the type of goats that can be kept? The appeal is for permission to keep two Norwegian miniature goats. Will this limit of two be defined if a permit is authorized? Also, is the cons- uh, has a concern of does versus bucks? You did say they were, they were female.
Two female.
Number three, I request that- Number three, I request that all manure and bedding such as hay, straw shaving, sawdust saturated with urine, et cetera, be stored in a manure pile to the rear of their lot near their garden. As shown on the plot plan submitted and not along the property line nearest our home. And number four, what recourse do we have if there are unreasonable odors? The next correspondence that we had was from Joe Posnick. Hello, thank you for the notice. I don't have any objections to the resident keeping mini goats on their property. There are other residents with a variety of chickens and other animals living on the street, Joe. And I don't think we have any other written comments submitted. For the minutes, I'm just going to note that Mr. Shartrind thankfully joined us for this hearing. Thank you for doing so. We don't have any remote attendees who would like to make a statement or ask a question. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a statement or ask a question? Sir, you're welcome to. Please approach the podium. State your name and address and you're welcome to comment.
Hi, I'm Ralph Miller and I live at eight twenty-eight Fisher Road. And I'm Deborah's nearest neighbor. And I'm the person that wrote the last email that you read. And in follow-up, I just want to ensure, and I spoke to Deborah before we came in, that I needed to find that there be no more than two goats. In addition to what her request was, the two miniature goats, I want them to be the miniature breed. And that they be does, no bucks. Because bucks have odor, it's unbearable at times. The other issue is in regards to item three with the manure. And I've been thinking about the grain. And what we have with livestock, whether they're pets, as Deborah is going to be treating them, they're still livestock. Livestock has two things. You have grain and you have manure. Now, we addressed the manure and all the bedding and the urinated bedding, the sawdust, hay, whatever you use. And it's going to be changed from where you currently place it, I understand, Deborah, to a compost pile up by the back lot, which would be what I would desire. However, grain, we live near Hollis Hills Farm. Farm rats travel. And farm rats are at Hollis Hills Farm, whether we want to admit it or not. So what I'm asking for on grain is any soiled grain doesn't get put in the manure pile. Any soiled grain gets picked up and put in a container or however you want to handle it, but gets thrown out with your collectible trash or whatever. But not disposed of in a compost pile or a manure pile. Because the rats don't care if it's wet. The goats do. They won't eat it. It's thrown out by the owner. But we got to make sure it gets disposed of so rats don't get to it. And I guess basically that's it. I don't oppose them having the two pet goats, just to make that clear. And that's about all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming to the meeting to make a comment. We appreciate it. All right. Seeing no other persons, I am going to move to board comment. And since he's remote, Mr. Shartrind, I'm going to go to you first. You're muted. Let me see if I can unmute you.
There we go. There we go. There we go, that's better. No, I don't really have any questions. I think that all the questions have been addressed. The only concern that I really have would be that sometimes, is the property served by sewer or septic?
Septic.
Septic.
It's septic? Then you definitely should check with the BOH, the Board of Health, in regards to, you know, if they have any concerns. Where I work in Townsend, all the properties are served by, by septic. And a lot of people have livestock because they allow it by right. So I've been, I'm a little well versed with it. Typically, there may be some requirements on that stuff for nitrogen loading and stuff when it comes to your septic. So I would, I would run it by the Board of Health. This is my only concern. Don't have any other questions.
Sir, sir, the board is, the board controls the discussion unless you're allowed to speak at the podium. Thank you. Mr. Shartrind, do you have any recollection of whether there is licensure required for these animals, either through the city clerk or the Board of Health?
I do not because honestly, we allow very little of it. You know, that's not real agricultural farming. But again, I would check with them. It would, it would be with the Board of Health if they had regulations like that. It definitely is not the building department.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Did I ask a question?
No. No, sir. No.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Sir, I've said no. Mr. Byrne?
Mike and I went to the property and we saw where the goats were going to be. Put up the pen that they're, that's made for them. And everything looks good. We also stopped by Mr. Miller's place where he raised the particular points that he has of the two. He wants two female goats. And he'd like to have the compost that was dumped on this side of his property, picked up and moved to the back of the property where the compost is going to be. So this area here, which is right next to the road, which is directly across the street from his house, doesn't have a smell going into his house because the prevailing winds run right across the top of the hill and right across the pen and right into his garage and living room. And I don't think that those two requests are that far afield. And that they should be reconsidered, they considered in the conditions. And he wanted to know about, also about, like in the email, he wanted to know about the sunset clause that we put in. And we explained that to him.
Thank you very much, Mr. Byrne. Mr. Gallagher? I, I'm very interested in your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will note this, that the, the area was done, in my opinion, quite nicely and professionally. I actually shook the post. And I would agree that, I don't know, I wasn't there when the holes were dug, but the posts were very sturdy. The gauge of metal that was used to keep the goats in their area was adequate. I noted that the area that they were in was very clean and free of any type of excrement or anything like that. It was quite clean. The feeding conditions were, were adequate as well. I also would like to note that there was one that had recently had surgery on its head. And it seems to me that it was more of a, more of a situation of saving an animal that may not have been saved. So there was a, a level of compassion to the animal, which I can appreciate. I noticed that there was a topical medicine applied by the veterinarian to reduce infection. So it looks like the treatment is continuing. It looks like there's a, 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 a real effort to take very good care of the animals and I appreciate that. My concern is that, you know, the, the bedding be moved to the back of the property away from the abutter. Because like Joe has just said, with crosswinds and stuff like that, their sitting area is in a close proximity. So, you know, I, I think that that's reasonable to put the bedding behind. I'm going to add this suggestion that if the odor still prevails, would the applicant be willing to take the bedding off-site and dispose of it into a compost pile? I don't know that that's going to be a problem, but I felt it might be worth mentioning to keep everybody happy. Other than that, I don't, I, I will note that the, the property was very meticulously maintained and loved. And I have no doubt that if you're going to maintain your property to that level, that you wouldn't maintain livestock the same way. So I'm really confident that they're in good hands and they, they will be handled properly. So that's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McLaughlin, questions?
No questions at the applicant. But I have conversation for deliberation.
Okay. I am going to review the special permits questions with you, ma'am. So, so I am going to review them with you right now.
Okay.
And if you can make a response for each question. So we need, in order to grant a special permit, to find that the benefit to the city and the neighborhood outweigh the adverse effects of the proposed use, taking into account the site and the proposal in relation to the site. And these are the, the impacts that we need to consider. Any social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal?
It's okay to do that.
Okay. Are there any needs that are served by this proposal?
Not that I can see.
Any impact on traffic flow or safety? You're not going to decrease the amount of parking that you have?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. And no, no additional access to that site? Adequacy of utilities and other public services? As you stated, it's on septic. Is it also on a well?
I don't know that.
You don't know if your property has a well or, or public water?
We have public, we have public water, yes.
Probably wouldn't have a well.
Okay. So you have a public water, you don't, but you have a septic system?
Yes, the septic system's on the side. It's not even where the goats are.
Can you describe the neighborhood character to me? Would you agree that it's rural in nature?
Yes.
Are there any impacts on the natural environment due to what you're doing? And I think we've heard about, you know, the disposal and composting of the waste being a potential issue. Potential fiscal impact on the city? I don't think there's going to be any fiscal impact from your goats because you're not selling anything. You're not producing anything. All right. And that is the end of the special permit criteria. Do you have anything to add before we close the public hearing, ma'am?
No.
Okay. And sir, I did allow you to speak once, but if you had one more additional question, I'll allow that.
I had a question that the chairman brought up about the Board of Health. I didn't understand. Let's see, I raised my hand.
So, Mr. Shartrind, you're welcome to answer him if you would like.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
When you mentioned something about the Board of Health, I didn't understand what you were trying to get across.
So, so the Board of Health is responsible for enforcement of the state sanitary code? And they do have some requirements on, on septic. You know, it's not just the property septic. If there are other properties served by well or septic nearby, that may be an issue. So there, there's a couple of concerns there. If everybody's served by town water, great. But I'm, I'm not a hold of that research. But I would check with them because where I work, like I said, I do a lot of this. And there, there are concerns with livestock and wells and septic.
Okay, no, I got it, no.
All right. All right. You're welcome. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing without objection and move to deliberations. Mr. McLaughlin, would you like to start us off on discussion?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Right, this is, this request is for relief. And I think the requirement is, is it three acres, five acres typically? So with all due respect to the abutters who have been there long before the goats, that, you know, the conditions that were mentioned by Mr. Miller are really kind of spot on, what we typically would put on. Only two goats, or I should say two does. I would think in this particular situation, I would only want it to, to reflect the two that are in existence there now and not, you know, be perpetuated with additional animals once these pass on. And that, as Joe had mentioned, the conditions with that, you know, any bedding, any, anything as a result of the goats being kept on the premise be composted to the rear away from the abutter, only because it's fairly close proximity. Not to be operated as a nuisance is one of our standard conditions. I do want to say that.
Also added into that part about the compost in the back of the building?
Yes, I just said that.
Yeah, but.
Oh, to remove the existing.
Remove the existing so that it's back, move that to the back also.
Great. Lost my train of thought. You know, I just want to be respective to the abutters. I always look at these applications as, you know, how does it impact if I was to live next door? And I do want to say that I would want to somehow put in a condition that if there is one complaint about odor, that, you know, the permit be revoked. Because summertime's coming, people have a quality of life. There's a reason why the five acres is been chosen as, as, you know, a sizable area to accommodate. But I, I think these, these aren't your traditional goat. I would look at them more as a pet. And there's only two. And, you know, I think if we can put the conditions in as requested, we, you know, can make a vote.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Very extensive comments. If you don't mind, Mr. Byrne, before we, I think you have a comment as well. But I had a question for Mr. Gallagher.
And I also have a, a comment in terms of, I wish to associate myself with what Michael just said. However, I would ask that we could perhaps, instead of revoking the permit, if there was an odor issue, allow them the opportunity to remove the bedding from the property and dispose it in a, in a, I know that when I worked at Tufts and there was an abundance of bedding, there was a huge compost pile. But once in a while, we were able to bring it to a facility and dump it as well. So without just revoking the permit for them, I'd like to give them the option to look at removing it from the site if odor becomes an issue.
And I agree. I think what my, my intention was is to make known that it will be revoked or can be revoked if it's not rectified.
If they don't comply.
Yeah, not that we would, you know, always give somebody an opportunity to rectify a situation.
Right. And your question to me, Madam Chair?
I have two questions. And the first is relevant to what I was talking about. Is that, is in your opinion, the height of a fence at four feet adequate to prevent the goats from leaping out?
They do tend to jump, but these are miniature goats. And I noted that they were quite friendly. And when they came over to me, they didn't have that type of aggressive demeanor that you see. Generally, does don't. It's more of the bucks that want to jump and for obvious reasons. The females tend to be a little bit more docile. So I do not see them being able to scale that fence easily.
Okay. Other than what goats can always do under extraordinary circumstances?
They're miniatures too. And I think that they sort of know their size. And they look up at the fence and is this going to rip me open if I try to go over it? They're pretty smart animals, so.
And then my second question is, are the facilities adequate for the care of the goats in the winter or, or the very cold months? Or that, will they need to be moved to a different facility?
That's an excellent question. And I asked the applicant that. She had expressed that she. She had expressed that she has heaters. I would like to know the BTUs of the heaters, and-
That I don't know right now.
Okay. And is the shed that they're in insulated at all?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Do you know the R-value of what went into it?
I would have to ask my son. He built it on his boss's site.
Okay.
Three years ago.
Yep. And other doors in the front that can protect them from snow?
There is a door, and my son latches it, and there's a doggy door. And the goats know how to come in and out of the doggy door when the main door is shut, so if they want to go out and wander about, and then they come back in, when they feel like they're scared or something, they go in and out through the side doggy door in the back.
I will note that they're pretty resilient to the elements, and they adjust the fact that you have heating for them.
We have two heaters in the shed for him, one for the water, so the water doesn't freeze in the winter.
Correct.
And then the other heater to keep it warm inside.
Yeah. And at what temperature would you try to maintain for them?
This is my first year. I'm not, I can't, I don't know for sure on that. I don't know what my son, what my son's boss had it set at.
I would think somewhere between 45 and 50 degrees.
Okay.
But I'd have to check myself, because I'm a little rusty. I've been, I've been retired for six years, so some of these things, unfortunately, I'm not too sharp on, but I could find out for you.
Okay. Thank you for offering your expertise. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome, Kristi.
Mr. Byrne, any comments or proposals on conditions?
No.
I think we've covered just about everything.
Okay. I'm going to go through my list, which, Mr. McLaughlin, I think I've incorporated everything that you had stated, but if I missed something, let me know. So this would be a special permit for no more than two miniature female goats, including only the goats currently present on the property.
Correct.
Any used bedding to be moved to the rear property line? A minimum of 75 feet from all boundary lines? Or to be disposed of off-site? Including both present refuse and debris? And any future refuse created? Any spoilt grain to be disposed of off-site? Applicant to meet any other, any licensing or other requirements of the Board of Health? And to meet any setbacks or other Board of Health requirements regarding the septic system? Goat enclosure to be maintained appropriately in the area designated on the plan?
To meet goat building code?
I know.
That was fee work.
Adequate and appropriate cold weather shelter to be provided within the designated area? Any animals to receive regular veterinary care and inoculations?
And a sunset clause?
There shall be no odor or rodents present on the property due to the use? And the use shall not constitute a public or private nuisance. This special permit may be revoked for violation of this condition.
I apologize, Madam Chair. Did one of the earlier conditions, was it specific to these two particular goats?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Should you no longer be the owner of the property, this special permit will expire. So it's specific to you. I would propose that this special permit be good for a term of five years, renewable upon application? And that we have a review date in October.
Okay, I'll make a motion under ZBA 2023-19 for Deborah Lord at the property of 808 Fisher Road for the request of special permit with the conditions as stated by the chair.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chartrand. Any opposed? None? So the special permit is granted with the conditions. The decision will issue. You will need to record this decision at the Registry of Deeds in order for it to be effective. Okay? There's a condition in there about the Board of Health, which is very general in nature, and really means, I want you to go talk to the Board of Health and make sure you don't need anything in addition to what you've gotten here. All right?
Exactly.
Mm-hmm. The sunset clause in five years means, you know, we want to have the opportunity to see how it's going, and to have the opportunity to either renew it or not renew it, so, but you would need to come back to us within that five-year period of time.
But we'll see you in October.
Is there a date in October I need to come back?
Yes.
Why are we doing it with the winter? We should do it after the winter. January, February, bring her back.
Because this-
October 10.
Smell will generate itself over the summer, I think, if there's going to be a smell.
Madam Chair, Mr. Miller is raising his hand.
I know he is. And, Mr. Miller, I don't mean to be rude to you, but these are the rules of the public meeting, that the board speaks at times, and the public is only allowed certain periods of time to speak.
But I have one question. Everything's perfect, except in your specification, it's two miniature goats only. We, and it wasn't mentioned, that we were only at, no bucks.
I said two miniature female goats.
I didn't hear the female, I'm sorry.
Two miniature female goats, and only the goats on the property.
I apologize.
We forgive you.
Okay.
Only the two that exist today.
All right. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate your coming tonight. Good luck with everything. Mr. Chartrand, thank you very much for joining us for this meeting. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Welcome to stay or go.
I just want to say that the camera adds at least 10 pounds.
It's all in the perspective, right?
Thank you, Deborah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
We have one more.
We do. But I just, I asked Mr. Chartrand if he could be here for this one, because it was a new application, so we could have a full five.
I've got one question. Should I, the sooner I go to the Board of Health and the Registry of Deeds, the better?
You can't go to the Registry of Deeds until you get our decision, but yes, the sooner the better. So you can go to the Board of Health tomorrow if you'd like.
Okay. But the Registry of Deeds-
You'll need our written decision, and when, as soon as you get it, you should record it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
All right. Mr. Chartrand, are you going to stay for our last one? There's nobody here for it.
No, I think I got to go, but thanks, it was good. I'll see you guys.
Thanks for your time. Good night.
No problem.
All right. Calling the last matter on our agenda, which is ZBA 2019. ZDA. I know it's only quarter past eight, but it's been a long week already. ZBA 2019-40, 1033 Main Street. This is a review of the special permit under Section 181 313C 11 and 12, to occupy the building for automobile sales, business, and repair services located in the central business district. Now, this is before us, because we had, there has been a nuisance complaint. So we had a nuisance complaint dated January 9th, that the business owner has a special permit to operate a small auto repair, and according to the complainant, the business owner is violating the special permit conditions, doing repair outside. This was not supported after a visit to the property. But it is also my understanding that the business owner may no longer be the person who owns or operates this business. I am not, so there's been a general complaint on that subject. I don't have any specific evidence to support it. I went by today, it was certainly closed, there was nothing going on there. And we have a permit holder who has not shown up in response to the request to come to the meeting. So this has, this special permit has a sunset clause for the sale of the transfer of the business or the change of operation from Jose Santos. Ms. Mata, what was done to contact Mr. Santos?
I did email him, I mailed the notifications to Mr. Jose and property owner. I have not heard anything back. I called Mr. Jose, and, sorry, and spoke to him six, June 2nd. He stated that he was planning to be here tonight. That was my over-the-top conversation. I also want to tell you that we have a new applicant, applicant for that property is coming on the July's agenda.
So that is a different applicant than the current applicant?
And apparently, it's a new owner as well. Besides of a business owner, it's going to be a property owner and business owner.
Is there a new real estate owner currently?
No, it is some-
Just a new property owner, the person who's operating the business? Okay. So that's, that's a fair amount of evidence that Mr. Santos is no longer operating this business?
Madam Chair, I will like to make known that I believe it was last month, I don't have a specific day, but I went by one day, and there were state police there, and they were, appeared to be knocking the door down, the front door, or something to that effect as I drove by. I have seen people out there working on their, on vehicles with the garage doors open, but I did not see Mr. Santos. I haven't seen him at the property, and I go by it on a regular basis, so I think we should, you know, move to a vote, to revoke.
Okay. Are there any other comments on this matter, before we move to a vote? Mr. Gallagher?
I don't have any observations, Madam Chair. Every time I have gone by, I haven't, I, nothing's been visually apparent to me. I will note that I haven't seen Mr. Santos out there either, so other than that, I have no comment.
Okay. Mr. Byrne?
No comments.
Okay. I am going to note that condition number five of the special permit is auto repairs within the building only. And condition number 10 is the sunset clause upon the sale, transfer of the property, or change of operation from Jose Santos. Do we have a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion on ZBA 2019-40 for the special permit for Jose Santos at 1033 Main Street. And that's to approve the review.
In the affirmative?
In the affirmative.
We're not here on a review.
No.
This is not a scheduled review. It's-
But it's to review.
That's true. That's true. Do we have a second on that motion in the affirmative? All those in favor of the motion to approve the review? All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously opposed. Is there another motion regarding the termination of this special permit?
I'll make a motion, ZBA 2019-40, Jose Santos, 1033 Main Street, have the special permit revoked.
I'll second that.
And would you amend that motion to be for violation of conditions five and 10?
I can't, I can't, I can't honestly say that he has been doing stuff outside, because I haven't seen it.
Right.
So I can't say that, but I could say, what's the last one, 10?
I have, but I'm only one board member.
The sunset clause upon the sale or transfer.
Within the last-
It's our understanding that the sale is taking place, and there's a new owner coming in next month, so we're going to revoke his permit now.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin, you did witness repairs outside-
I did witness last week, outside repairs of vehicles in the parking lot.
So I would take that statement as evidence that that has been going on?
Then let's revise my revoke, my revoke issue to break in some of the conditions on our-
Conditions five and 10. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? The special permit is revoked. All right. That is the last matter on our agenda, unless anybody has an announcement or some happy news to convey to the public, or general well wishes.
In any, I just want to make it, while we're still on FATV, any people out there that see my hat and would like to have one, they can support the Historical Society, because the Historical Society is selling the Berg hat. And if you're interested in promoting the Berg, stop by the Historical Society and get your own pink hat.
Hours of operation, Joe?
We're not, you know, whenever they're open.
I would like to confirm to the public that as a result of his purchase and wearing of this hat, Mr. Byrne is at least 50% more attractive.
If that can happen to everybody, we're a great deal for Pittsburgh.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Do we have, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Everyone, have a lovely evening.